Yeah, I don't know. But again, part of that is because a lot of these cases just, you know.
I'm checking.
Don't check the rules.
We have four.
I think we might have to replug it in that one. To get some faculty like my end of the. So maybe not though. Four, so necessarily.
I know.
No, it's still in line. Still there.
Yeah, so.
So they, you know.
It's up.
Yeah. You didn't know. They do that now.
It's open.
A little bit of a lag, but it works.
Right, that's fair. All right. These things, you know, still, if these things are already, these was. Yeah, you can wait for another, it's sort of setting for it. Yeah. And stuff that's. I don't think you're sharing. No, I mean, that's the whole reason I wanted, you know, I'm from over here, so I think that's. Embarrassed, I didn't care, I'm embarrassed. I want to do something. Something special. Yeah, like if you did.
You should be able to plus.
See.
It's one. Me.
Let's do it. And so I want to. I want to present.
Yeah.
If you go back to the regular. Well, as I say, that's something that I saw, that I'm amazed we can see. It's a. Funny, it's. A little bit. I'm sorry.
That's the wall.
Yeah, so.
You know, there are.
Oh, a little.
Just like.
A little doubt. Honestly, I've been wanting to see it at some point.
You share.
I can't do it by then, so.
So the.
But um. Like. Uh.
It's.
Pretty.
It's. They go.
Oh, yeah. I.
Oh, here we go.
Well, the.
Over at some company.
We can.
There's.
We're improved.
The other one.
I mean, you. Right, like with your knowledge of the code, it's okay to be subject to your mental thing. There's uh, I can play with the parts and things like. Yeah, so. I'm only a paper thing that I can type with on it, but having a good thing. So. Yeah. That's. Sorry. Reporting for. Yeah. That's what I'm saying, because that's what. Okay.
My friend, this is.
I'm not.
Which it is, but the. I think.
They're not.
The. I. The. It's so bad. And I said.
I know. I just find that more, but. Yeah, more difference than I, like, I stand back.
No. Then you feel. Did anyone catch that? Catch that?
No, it's like.
Yeah, I started.
I'm not. Sir.
A little fresh, you know. And I also have. But.
We got. Because.
You. The same.
So.
Same for me.
Yes.
Totally. It's like.
Fine, you're right.
It's. Same. So. Every down and down.
It's more.
That's the old. Their.
They don't. That's a, that's an issue. Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think. It's that.
We need to downtown.
Maybe. Definitely, I don't want to block that out.
Oh, whatever. Problem, but it's.
They won't. Or settle. Yeah. Or maybe go.
On down.
Yeah.
It's.
You're.
It was red.
Yeah. Scott was like, well, sitting with me.
But.
Yeah.
Can you please do a.
Especially.
Yes.
And look, it's. I think you're. You know, for the water.
I'm. Yeah, I think. I have a test. Very. Was. But.
I think. I'll have to see.
I think. I don't just put you like. We're. Well, or.
It's. Which is. Altered. For us.
Yes. For.
I heard it. I do. I. I.
It's.
Yeah. No.
We have this problem.
They didn't want to pay. That's what I would want.
I think.
Same.
Oh, yeah.
And. Strange. You know. Oh, yeah.
And.
Do you like that?
I have. And.
Except. It's just. I'll give you a scow. Before we go. Small body. I'm like that.
I'm.
That's.
Sorry.
It's so good.
Bye.
That's.
Yeah. Sorry. No.
Oh. But yeah. You know. People. So I would. It's.
I get that. So.
I said.
For.
Walk.
Well.
Slide.
It was.
Well, no, I. Well, they're gonna get. Two. Like this. Be parents, I will share. That's. Four. It's. That's it. The doors. Put on. Or. Lord. She. Or. Be. Place. School. But.
Well.
Job. Having support.
Well, I. My.
Good.
I, I. I just went. There you go. Oh. Right. Do you believe. I mean, it's. I explain some.
Look at that.
They're. trial. Yeah. We're sure. Yeah. Backups. Not that.
I hate.
And.
First birthday.
Basically. It's. That. Much bigger. For herself.
I know.
I get you, right?
They tend to grow, things tend to grow.
They say.
Look at. So.
Oh.
It's like right at the. So.
Me, uh. But I'm sorry.
I drink.
What's that?
Yeah, it's like.
Looking.
So.
Yes, I was. When I found the word.
Yeah. She. She.
Yeah.
She.
Just. For. You got. Move. Take.
Well. Didn't. Especially. It's. I would not say no. Here's. Or. I can. You guys always. The man first. Oh. Well, uh. Yeah. So. Oh, for many cases, they're. That's. One. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. So. That's the honor to me. It's. You're actually being polished. I.
Um.
I got. There's.
There's.
Oh.
Now. Six.
Well.
You think.
You can.
Expect.
So. I. Asked.
So.
You only put some.
Yeah. You. Dollars. So. The box. Trying to.
There'd be like. Or. So. So. Nine year old. Remember.
Hello. Oh, my. Nice.
What.
Oh, no, no, no. One. Working.
So.
That's right.
After. We. And that's. Bring. Back. Everything. Yeah, let's have. It's. Have. I started in nineteen seventy. Didn't take. Why. Well. We.
Oh. I. No.
Friends. I need. But. I.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Put it.
Yours. Winter. Oh. Unfortunately. Fortunately. I love. And. I'm. And. First.
Easy. Oh, this. It's.
I'm. So. We. My. That's. Oh.
No.
Work.
Which.
I'm saying.
It's just like the. That's. That's. Like. What. Let's go. Are. Yeah. Yeah, they're. You see, if anybody.
Oh.
You know. Fair enough. Yeah, I had made. You know. That's. I was. Oh, you passed. What. You were. Yeah. Mom. I. Yeah. Why? I never did. So. Somebody had a question.
That's.
And I took it. True. So.
If.
I already have.
Yes.
Like. But. I'm.
Verbal. I just.
So is he trying to say?
It's a very. But. So. So.
So. See all the time.
It's. A. Fix. Stay. That is. So. Then. They go. I'm so glad we got.
Yes.
So.
Very.
I'm also. Trial in the. I tried. The. Goes. Process. And.
And.
So. Definitely.
Sure.
It's. One thirty nine. Fortunately, because. Yeah.
Yeah, he was. He was. Uh. He was. That.
From. Better. Kind of.
Sure. Like. It's. Did. Right. I.
I.
Right. I had.
It's.
Which. I only had. Audience.
I know.
But. It's. I have. Say. Separate. Oh. Yes.
Very.
It's. Okay.
They kept. Come on, you're. No. Yeah. So. I know you're doing your.
Uh. We. Perpetual.
Now.
Protective. I don't. Say. So. Great. I'm. Okay. Yeah.
Thanks.
Also.
Yeah. Well. Yeah.
So. I almost. Stand.
I mean, it's. You. Different. This both. This.
Well, that was. I have. Oh. I don't. Like. Just.
I just. I don't. Yeah. Yeah. Sell. Thank you. Which.
It's just. Like.
So. So I don't.
Very. Yeah.
It's. First.
Kind. Also.
Oh. I said. There. Go ahead. Yes. You're. I feel. Sorry. No, it's. Okay.
Sandra, I. Yeah. There are two things. This. Of course. Good. Exactly. For us.
Company. So. Yeah. Down. Yeah. I try to.
It's. We. It's. You know. It's. I mean. It's.
It's.
Yes. Guys.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
No.
Can't. Fight.
That sounds right.
Yeah.
Sounds. Be. Then.
Great.
You're. Yeah. Uh. We. Do. Like. This. Or. I think. Yes.
That's. But. But.
Uh. Man.
No. Sorry.
Great. I'm not. I was not. Right.
Hold on. So. So.
Yeah. 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 Down there. Cause that was. But. Days out like. Uh. So.
With some.
Oh.
Yeah.
All.
So. That's. Yeah. Part of. I was. Sleep. By. Rest.
Very.
They're managed. They're. I hope that. We stick here. So. That. Lots.
Right.
And. Fire. Really. Have. Once. Yeah. But like. They. Yeah. Well.
I loved.
So. Yeah. Broke. I. Friends. Yeah. And. Have. I was. Oh. But.
Well.
And so he's like.
And. He's. So.
So.
For.
Walk.
I know.
So. Yeah.
My. For. Pretty.
Uh. Yeah. They.
For. I'm.
There.
Car. Yeah.
Yellow.
Oh, yeah. Every stuff. I.
It. Wow.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah. Let's. So. Saying. Radio. Saturday. Thank. I. Talk. Like. So. You know. Well. I. Yes. I. Well.
Same.
Yeah. Yeah.
Compared. And.
Yeah. It's like. Oh.
Yeah. Like. I'm. Yeah. Um. Those.
You know, they're all. Those.
Yeah.
Very.
And.
Wow. A better. Slide. Yeah. Just. It's. Man. Yeah. Basically. Well. They. Yeah. Uh. Cars. Swimming over the. Rainbow. Oh. Is. He. Right. It was. It's.
Yeah.
There it is.
It's. I can't.
Yeah. Some. Yeah. So. It's. Well.
So.
Was there any work from, uh, from.
Oh, yes.
And it's like. I. That's. Society. Oh, we're not. Sorry. Sorry. Yeah.
Everybody. Said.
Oh. That's. I say like. It's. It's, uh, hard enough. Certainly. It's.
But.
Centered. Okay. My. Fraud. Injury. Shouldn't.
And what?
Uh. With this. Yeah. Some should have his business.
Yes.
And.
They. Yeah.
I don't. I don't. H. From. Wrong. Okay.
She. Switzerland. On.
I know. We. We plan. Yeah. Well, second. For. The. You know those. Here. Uh. We have like. Uh. That. A lot of. Other. Yeah. When you used to. I mean, used to be. It's a little thinner. The Austrian yellow. He. He was white. I remember. That. That. That's. Bad. Sure. Yes.
Technically. Yeah.
So. It's. A bunch. You. Now, we're making copies for you. Yeah. John. We're making copies for you. We're waiting. Right. Day. We. Don't.
Sweet.
Oh, what's the word? Right. For. That's. Yeah.
They get up. Hey. What? You. Oh. The.
Who. It's. It's.
We. Even. Five.
Yeah. They're always.
Yeah.
Actually. Yes.
I. I want. So. Oh. So.
Oh.
I. Those. For. So. Ready. Well. Be. Like. That's. I.
So.
The.
I. So. Please. Yeah.
But. It's.
Yeah. That's. It's.
That.
You're. Respect. That's. How. Yeah. Don't. This.
The.
Yeah. 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 This. I'm. I'm.
Oh.
Travis.
Yeah. Yes. No.
Yeah. Yeah. This. For.
I. So. And. Very. I'm. But.
By. These. They're. Who. Turn. So.
So. So. Follows. And. So. She. Yeah. So. He's. But. So. So.
It's.
That's.
That's.
You do. Started.
Impressive.
Yeah. You know.
Oh, no. Knowing. First. Oh, my. And then. Oh.
You.
So. So. So.
So. That's just. It's just. Nail. He's a. Guy. He's. Um. I only. Friends. Because. It's. It's. The best. To. So. We.
So.
I was.
Yeah. Yeah. This. Yeah. Yeah. After. I mean. Slots. That. I think so. Uh. Great. Yeah. You. Let me know if it pops.
Think. That's.
Right. You.
It's. It's.
Oh.
God. Your.
Sorry.
That's.
Oh. Yeah, that's.
That's what it is. So, yes. Oh, I see. From. That's. But. Oh, man. Yeah. Single. One. But. Say. No, I am a client, but that's what I'm. And this. Yes. Say. Not. Yeah. You said.
Okay. He.
So. And. Really. Uh. Sorry.
That was. I. I. Was.
Yeah. Oh. So.
This. In. Where. Somebody.
We. I. Sorry. Thanks. Sing. Oh. And. Yeah.
You're.
She. My. Yes. Now. It's.
First. Who. Guys. On. Yeah.
You'll. Know.
All right.
Sorry. Okay. I'm.
Yeah. Or.
Oh.
I'll. We.
Oh.
Well, I'm like. That. So.
Okay, I have the call. July tenth, two thousand twenty five. Mentioned. Name. Order. And we had a flag back in the corner. And then our. And maybe. Yes. There. So. We start with. With the, uh, right. allegiance. Right. Allegiance. To. The. States. Into. Your. Stance. Commission. In. Yeah. Okay, just a point of, uh. Uh. I'm. Now. Point of, uh, information. Cases number two and three are tabled. It will not be heard in the next. So. You're here for two or three. As. Not gonna happen. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, before we get into the four thirty agenda, I have two quick announcements. Uh, announcement number one is more of an FYI for the development commission members. Uh, city council approved legislation that in limited circumstances, uh, will allow applicants to request a rezoning from title thirty three to title thirty four. So these are the new mixed use districts that are zoning created last year. So, uh, you may see those come your way. Uh, announcement number two is an update on zoning Columbus. As you know, the city of Columbus is engaging in a multi-year, multi-phase provision of its zoning code, known as zoning Columbus. On June thirtieth, Columbus City Council adopted a resolution. Supporting the priorities and next steps of zoning Columbus phase two. Phase two will focus on economic and housing opportunities to help continue modernizing. Phase Two will focus on economic and housing opportunities to help continue modernization of our zoning code. Please visit zone-in-columbus dot hub, H U B, dot arc, G I S, A R C, G I S, dot com to access the following Phase Two items. The what's next document, which outlines zone in Phase Two priorities, strategies, and includes a focus area map. A survey regarding zone in Phase Two priorities and to provide input regarding the focus area map. And a list of mapping workshops that are open to the public and being attended by city council members. These mapping workshops will take place at the following dates and locations. Wednesday, June sixteenth, at Buckhead Middle School located at twenty-nine fifty Persons Avenue. Wednesday, June twenty-third, at West High School located at one seventy-nine South Powell Avenue. And Wednesday, June thirtieth, at East High School, uh, that's at fifteen hundred East Broad Street. All mapping workshops are from five to seven P M. and all are invited to attend. So, please again, visit zonein-columbus dot hub, dot arc, G I S, dot com for more information. Everything I just listed out is included on the website. That's all I have.
Okay, there will be a coils in fifteen minutes. Okay, case number one, Z twenty-five dash zero twenty-four, eighteen fifty-four St. Sir Road.
Please see your supplemental packet for an updated staff report. We have three traffic access study and revised set fans dated July third, twenty twenty-five. The fourteen-acre site consists of five undeveloped parcels pending annexation into the city of Columbus upon which they will be assigned to our rural district. The applicant requests the L A R one limited apartment residential district to allow for multi-unit residential development. The proposed develop. The proposed apartment complex will also provide residential amenities, including a pool, clubhouse, outdoor kitchen, fire pit, and a dog park as demonstrated uh, with the submitted site pin and building elevations. North of the site are single-unit dwellings as well as an under. As well as undeveloped private lots in the R twelve urban residential district of Midland Township. East of the site is undeveloped land in the R rural district of Midland Township. West of the site are single-unit dwellings in the R rural district of Midland Township. Further west of the site is a proposed self-storage facility in the L M limited manufacturing district and a proposed apartment complex in the A R one apartment residential district. The site is within the planning boundaries of the Northeast Area Plan, which recommends office-like industrial land uses at this location. The site is located within the boundaries of the Northeast Area Commission, whose recommendation is for approval. Concurrent council variance C V two-five dash zero four three has been filed to increase the garage building height, reduce building lines, and reduce the required perimeter guard. This request will be heard by city council and will not be considered at this development commission meeting. The limitation text includes use restrictions, a maximum of two hundred and sixty-four unit dwelling units, and includes a commitment to develop the site in accordance with the submitted site plan and building elevations. The Columbus multimodal thoroughfare plan is in price stills a road as a suburban community connector requiring a hundred and twenty feet of right-of-way. The requested L A R one district will allow an apartment complex with two hundred and sixty-four dwelling units with residential amenities. Although the proposed use is in accordance with the Northeast Area Plan's recommendation of office-like industrial land uses at this location, the plan recommends a mix of housing price points within all neighborhoods to provide housing opportunities throughout the Northeast area, ensuring availability of housing near jobs. As such, staff recognize the proposal's location on the corridor with transit and compatibility with existing apartment residential to the west as mitigating factors for support of the use. And city department's recommendation is for approval.
Any questions or comments? Track.
Uh, with the updated site plan and the approved, uh, traffic access study, all further comments, all comments have been addressed.
Okay, thanks. Hunter.
No additional comments or findings?
Okay, is anyone here to speak regarding case number one tonight? Nobody. Got one?
Hi there.
Ladies and.
Um, hi, I'm Beth Seedorf from the Boris Law Firm. Thanks for that opportunity to speak with you today. I'm trained by Joe Thomas on behalf of Metro Development. Um, we're happy to answer any questions you guys might have, but, um, appreciate staff's, uh, support on this and, uh, working with us to get this, uh, to this point.
Okay, it's very apparent you've done your own homework here and it seems that everything is in order. We do need a motion to include the July third revised text. Okay, aren't all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I need a motion to vote. Someone? Back up. Okay. Please call the roll.
Amanda Golden?
Yes.
John Emerson?
Yep.
Ian Frenelman?
Yes.
Travis Packer?
Yes, you are approved.
Thank you.
Okay, case number four. Z twenty-five dash zero twenty-seven fifty-three Harmon Avenue.
The site consists of one parcel developed with a commercial warehouse in the C four commercial district. The requested end manufacturing district will allow the construction of a warehouse for equipment storage. The north of the site are undeveloped parcels in the M two manufacturing district and the P one private parking district. The south is a single unit dwelling in the A R one apartment residential district. The east and west is an undeveloped parcel light industrial and commercial warehouse uses in the end manufacturing district. The size within the planning boundaries of the West Franklin Plan, driven by its regional mixed-use plan uses at this location. Additionally, the plan includes completed option of Columbus citywide planning policy design guidelines. City is, the site is located within the boundaries of the Franklin Air Commission, whose recommendation is for approval. The Columbus multimodal thoroughfare plan identifies this portion of Harmon Avenue as an urban community connector requiring eighty feet of right-of-way. The requested end manufacturing district will allow construction for the warehouse for equipment storage. Although the proposal is in accordance with the West Franklin Plan's regional mixed-use recommendation, staff are support because of nearby existing and plan-recommended manufacturing industrial uses. Additionally, the site design includes appropriate buffering and screening as recommended by C two P two design guidelines. Therefore, this recommendation is for approvals.
Okay, questions, comments? Okay, Dan, traffic?
No issues.
And, Hunter?
Planning is no additional comments?
Okay, is anyone here to speak regarding case number four? Okay, once again, give us your name for the record.
Sydney Emiani.
Elizabeth Lydie.
Okay, no questions, no opposition, anything else you need to add to the presentation?
Nope.
With no further ado, please talk at all. Or, uh, I guess we need a motion.
I don't know.
Second. All those in favor? I have. Now, but. John Emerson?
Yes.
Ian Frenelman?
Yes.
Amanda Golden?
Yes.
Travis Packer? Yes, you are approved.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, case number five. Z twenty-four dash zero seventy-eight thirty-six thirty-nine gender road.
The three-point-nine-sixteen acre site, that's a single parcel developed with the health communications tower and C P D commercial plans development district. The applicant requests the A R three apartment residential district to allow for a multi-unit residential development. North of the site are single-unit dwellings in the S R suburban residential district and a health clinic in the C P D commercial plan development district. South of the site are multi-unit dwellings in the L A R twelve limited apartment residential district and a Columbus fire station in the C P D commercial plan development district. East of the site, uh, is a fuel station, C P D partial plan development district. And west of the site are multi-unit dwellings in the L A R twelve limited apartment residential district. Council variance case C V twenty-four dash one sixty-eight was previously filed for this project in order to apply for OPA funding and was passed by city council with the condition that the applicant complete this rezoning application to rezone the property to an appropriate district for proposed use. The applicant may be required to file a concurrent, uh, count, uh, council variance to address any area variances that cannot be obviated by compliant site design, as C V twenty-four dash one sixty-eight included a use variance, but did not address any area variances. The site is within the planning boundaries of the Southeast Land Use Plan, which recommends the mixed-use one sixteen to twenty-four dwelling and is for acre land use at this location. Site is also, uh, subject to complete adoption of the Columbus citywide planning policies, C two P two design guidelines. The site is located within the boundaries of the Greater Southeast Dairy Commission, who recommends approval with the recommendation that the fencing long gender road be removed. Division of Traffic Management has indicated that any traffic-related items can be addressed at final site compliance or through a concurrent council variance. The Columbus multi, uh, multimodal thoroughfare plan identifies gender road as a suburban commuter corridor requiring eighty feet of right-of-way from the center line. City department's recommendation is that approval. The requested A R three planned unit development district will allow the site to be developed with a multi-unit residential development. The proposal is consistent with the Southeast Land Use Plan's recommendation of mixed-use one, uh, land use at this location. Staff also note that divisions, exposed elevations, and landscape plan are consistent with C two P two design guidelines.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Comments? Okay, Dan, any traffic issues?
No issues.
And, Hunter?
Planning, no additional comments?
Okay. Is anyone here to speak regarding case number five, gender? Or a roll here?
All right. Good afternoon. I'm Brad Box with Ross Brown College here representing the applicant. Uh, just wanted to thank the area commission, uh, for its support on this, as well as staff, for all of their assistance, and thank you, uh, for your time this evening. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, apparently you test all bases as well as the previous two, so.
Right.
Good. Okay, I need, I will need any motions or this is for the coming. Need a motion to take a vote? Second.
Second.
Any? All those in favor?
Aye.
Please call the roll.
Ian Frenelman?
Yes.
Amanda Golden?
Yes.
John Emerson?
Yes.
Travis Packer?
Yes, you are approved.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move along with case number seven. Z twenty-five dash zero nineteen. Forty-six ninety-one Central College Road.
See a supplemental packet for eleven month acquisition and petition with several signatures in opposition. The ten-to-one acre site consists of one parcel developed with a single unit dwelling in our rural district. The applicant requests the L A R one limited apartment residential district to allow for the development of an apartment complex with two hundred and sixteen dwelling units. The proposed apartment complex will also provide residential amenities, including a pool, clubhouse, people ball courts, and an activity area as demonstrated with the submitted site plan and building elevations. North of the site are single-unit dwellings in the R one restricted suburban residential district of London Township. South and west of the site are single and multi-unit residential developments in the P U D four planned unit development district. East of the site is a park in the R rural district. The site is located within the Little Turtle District of the Northland Plan Volume Two, which recommends single-unit residential development at a maximum density of three units per acre. The site is located within the boundaries of the Northland Community Council, whose recommendation is for disapproval. The limitation text includes use restrictions, supplemental development standards, a maximum, maximum of two hundred and sixteen dwelling units, and includes a commitment to develop the site in accordance with submitted site plan and building elevations. The Columbus multimodal thoroughfare plan identifies Central College Road as a suburban community connector requiring one hundred feet of right-of-way. The requested L A R one district will allow an apartment complex with two hundred and sixteen dwelling units with residential amenities. Although the proposal is higher than the recommended density, the Northwest Plan Volume Two notes that it's an alternative development pattern to be sought for this area. This plan recommends that consideration be given to surrounding rural settings and land uses. Staff notes that the proposal is adjacent to multifamily residential units to the west and townhome developments to the southeast. And the proposal is buffered from Central College Road and adjacent uses. And cities, uh, rec, city department's recommendation is for approval.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? Okay, Dan, traffic issues?
Um, all our issues were, uh, addressed by the applicant, however, would be worth noting that there is a city project that will be performing road rewidening, uh, including the proportion of the frontage of the site and completing the. Include the, uh, intersection of Central College Road and the road, older roads. Uh, that project will be beginning, um, in fall and will be continued through next year, so it will be some additional infrastructure improvements happening the next year within this.
So, are they funded?
Area. Yes, it is. It's funded and will be in construction very soon.
Okay. And Hunter, I mean, planning issues?
Planning is no additional comments?
Okay. Is anyone here to speak regarding case number six? Okay, it's time, time for everybody to get neighborly and get your heads together and pick and select three speakers. Is, uh. You have a Northland area representative.
Here's.
Okay. He doesn't count. He, he's separate, so he gets to speak. Three more speakers, three minutes each. You're good? Okay, you know the drill, don't be repetitive and use your time wisely. Okay. David? Jared?
Uh, David Hodge, attorney with the law firm under Helen Hodge here this evening on behalf of Preferred Living.
Jared Smith from Preferred Living, Chief Attorney.
Well, Chairman Fitzpatrick, you've been on the roll until this case, and the roll obviously stops here. Um. I'm gonna veer a little bit off course uh, with my, uh, initial remarks here and then, uh, hopefully bring this back around to, uh, what it is we're doing with this property out on Central College Road. Um. I love Columbus alive. I'm grateful every day for what, by whatever forces in the universe led me, uh, on the path to end up in this community. Um. It's truly a blessing to be here. Uh, it's, it's just a great town. And I know that I am not alone in saying that in this room. Um. I, in, in feeling the way I feel about the community, you know, just a couple, just a few of the things that are so great about Columbus. We have amazing educational opportunities here. And that's not just Ohio State. That's Capitol in Bexley, that's Columbus State downtown, and that's O D U on the, on the, on the, even the north-central part of town, and that's Autobahn on Westerville, and that's, uh, just, just a handful, and it's all over the place. It's an amazing, it's an amazing opportunity for people. We've got jobs in the city of Lee from Intel, if that ever gets going in force, to, to indoor, uh, to hospital systems, uh, to architectural firms, to government jobs, to chemical abstracts, to O C L C, and on and on and on. We've got recreational opportunities. We've got the great city of Columbus, uh, Recreation Department that has golf courses, trails, and paths and everything. We've got the metro park system, uh, the regional system. We've got, uh, relatively recently Rapid Five and, and the Linkus Initiative, which is, is gonna make resources available to improve our waterway trails regionally. And so Columbus is amazing. It's really a, a, it's been, uh, a, 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 a well-kept secret, but, uh, not anymore. You come to Columbus, Ohio. You put your nose to the grindstone. You have some excellent mentors, and the American dream is here alive and well. Um. I came to town twenty-seven or eight years ago. When I came here, I was in the department. Before I came to town, from the time I was seventeen. Before I came to town, from the time I was seventeen until I came here for law school, I lived in an apartment. Um, but now, but now, in twenty twenty-five, our community has a housing problem. We do, and we all know it. This, this application is before the Development Commission tonight after an all-agency review, all administrative agency review of this proposal. And that includes, uh, Shannon Pine, it includes Tim Dietrich, it includes all of the zoning personnel here, it includes Christopher Lor and Mark Rosten and Hunter Rayfield and Sophie Vogel. And 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 in order to develop their recommendation to this commission, they analyzed the city's existing policy documents. They didn't just put their finger up in the wind and say, what is this? They analyzed the Northland Plan. They analyzed the Northland Plan Volume Two. They analyzed C two P two. And they know, uh, at the end of the day, that we have a housing problem and that that the city of Columbus, thank goodness, has adopted a housing policy to facilitate housing in our community. But it doesn't just stop with the city's administrative personnel. It also includes our elected officials. Mayor Ginther recently, in his twenty twenty-five state of the city, said we have underbuilt and underdeveloped since before the Great Recession, oh, seven, oh, eight. And that issue has just compounded since then. So over the next decade, we need to build two hundred thousand homes across our region just to meet demand. That doesn't even put any in surplus. That's just to meet the demand. Uh, Mayor Ginther, Mayor Ginther again on his five hundred million dollar bond for housing. One of the most powerful ways we can address our housing crisis is to get shovels in the ground and build units for Columbus residents struggling with housing instability. Mayor Ginther again on equitable access. We believe that everybody who works here ought to be able to afford to live here, regardless of what they do for a living, cops, firefighters, firefighters, nurses, teachers. They ought to be able to afford to live in the communities they serve. So that's our mayor. Our president of, uh, council, Shannon Harden, said Columbus is a growing city with growing needs. The bond package ensures we're not just keeping up, we're planning ahead for generations to come. He says that the housing crisis is absolutely real. We are alarmingly underproducing housing units at all price points. We have a need for permanent supportive housing all the way to market rate and everything in between. And last, and I've got a ton, but I know I'm boring you to death. I wanna, I wanna make mention of what our zoning chairperson at Columbus City Council, Rob Dorance, has said. Our housing crisis gets worse by the day. There's no silver bullet that's going to fix our housing crisis. It's a thousand things we need to do to produce more housing. And he also said, we have a supply and demand problem. I would say it's a crisis, and we know that crisis is only going to worsen. So, what is this proposal? Um, Alyssa, if you could, I sent you an email earlier today with some exhibits. I'd like to refer to those and Chairman Fitzpatrick, if it's okay with you, I'll come over to this board and point to a few things. This is, this is it, Alyssa? Okay, so, uh, members of the commission, this is the original site plan submitted to the city when we started, uh, this zoning process. This is two hundred and sixty, two hundred and sixteen multifamily units. See on the north, the clubhouse and building one framing the edge of the right-of-way. On the, on the west side of the, of the, uh, proposal, there's a fifty-foot setback. City code is twenty-five perimeter yard. There's a fifty-foot setback on the west. At that point, we had a fifty-foot setback on the south and a twenty-five-foot setback on the east. So this was the original proposal submitted to the city. We go to the next, uh. This is, uh, a revised site plan, and this is the site plan that we went forward to the Northland Community Council with. A few, uh, revisions here. Uh, still two hundred and sixteen units, respecting the fifty-foot perimeter yard on the west. With that proposal, we took the southern perimeter yard from fifty to twenty-five, still meeting code, but we were at fifty-one to twenty-five and still twenty-five over here on the east along the park. If you could go to the next slide, please. This is, this is the, uh, site plan that is companion to this, that is with this reserving request tonight. And a couple things to point out, still two hundred and sixteen units. Um, over on the west, still respecting the fifty-foot double, the minimum requirement over on the west, with, you can see, uh, uh, significant landscape screening within that fifty-foot setback. On the south side, we went from twenty-five back to fifty. So again, on the south, we have doubled the setback with landscaping as a perimeter, uh, there. Uh, on the east side, we have gone from twenty-five feet to thirty-seven feet. So on terrible map, twelve feet more than the minimum, uh, code requirement. And that is the result of some, uh, really extensive, direct, hands-on work with the city of Columbus Recreation and Parks. This property to the east is a city park. It comes down and wraps around to the south. And Recreation and Parks feedback was that they wanted us to not just respect the code minimum requirement, but to increase that to thirty-seven, to provide some buffering in there, giving us the opportunity to maintain a pretty mature tree road that exists there. Uh, also Recreation and Parks asked us to move the secondary emergency access, uh, out of that setback, which we were able to do. One other, one other, um, um, item on the site plan that I want to draw your attention to. And Alyssa, if you go two up. Okay, so this was, again, the original, uh, proposal. And you see with, with these buildings oriented on the site plan the way they are, these buildings have, uh, small balconies and patios. And, uh, some of the neighbors over here were concerned about people being able to see into their yard. I mean, this is multifamily here, as you can tell. And so when, with the reorientation, and so please go down random to the, to the next one. Let's go one more down. You can see with the current proposal, we were able, we we reoriented those buildings, uh, kind of get a mirror image, move that over here along the park. And these are sides of buildings now that are, uh, adjacent to multifamily, uh, over to the west. One more exhibit, I think it must be the final exhibit in the package. One more. Are you, could you, could you blow that up just a tad? Is that possible? If not, that's okay.
Yeah. Hit the X on the comments on both sides.
Yeah, okay. So this is the, this is the Columbus zoning map that that we went in and, um, made some edits and highlighted a few things on. This is, this is the subject property here crosshatched. Proposing the apartment residential district. Over to the west, we have a P U D that has multifamily. We have this park to the south, this church. But when you look out in a little more of a proximate view of what's going on down here to the southeast, we've got an A R twelve, an A R one, A R twelve, A R one. We've got all of this central area, which is a T and D. Some of our Development Commission members have been here a long time. You remember the T and D. I think T and D is, is going the way of T and D. I think that's all going to get unzoned with the new zoning initiative. But this is all T and D, which was a kind of new urbanist, uh, policy thought process that frankly didn't work. Um, looking over here to the east, we have a couple of C fours. Those are developed residential hotels, which is for all intents and purposes multifamily residential. We have an A R one here. Uh, and so you can see from a regional perspective, there, uh, there is really a true mix of uses, uh, here in the corridor. You'll, you'll remember recently, M I Homes was recently here on this property, uh, for P U D six and just up northwest of there, Epcun was recently here, uh, for so there, uh, multifamily product just up north and west of here. So in terms of proposing apartment residential district in this location, it is most definitely, uh, consistent with the existing land use pattern. It's obviously consistent with the city's guiding documents in terms of the Northland Plans, C two P two, and the directive from our elected officials. I'll take a breath and stop there and do my best to answer questions.
Questions? I think you've done a good job of explaining the fix. Uh, if you would, uh, if you agree, we'll have you move off the table. We'll have a speaker come up and then we'll bring you back there.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. David?
Good evening, Chief Fitzpatrick, members of the commission. I'm Dave Paul. I co-chair the Northland Community Council Development Committee. We did meet with the applicant and their attorney back on May twenty-eighth, uh, at which time, as he mentioned, they presented the, well, it was the second iteration of this project that he showed a few months ago. Um, at that time, uh, we spent a fair amount of time on this case. Uh, we had sixteen of our committee members and attendants. We also had about seventy-five members of the surrounding community come to speak with us, of which six were permitted to speak to committees. Uh, at the conclusion of our meeting, the committee recommended by unanimous vote, disapproval of this application. We felt, uh, both, uh, based on our own assessment, but also on the comments that were presented to us by surrounding property owners and residents, the density of the project, the twenty-two dwelling units per acre, uh, was far too high for this location considering what surrounds it. I wonder if we could go back by the way to the applicant's, uh, map that showed land use. And I'm, I wonder if we could also establish what the scale of this map is, if it's easy to see. I don't know if it is. It may not be like that.
David, are you looking at a distance from the A R ones?
I am looking at distance from all the A R zone. Yes, I'm trying to get.
I'm sorry.
Please. Thank you.
In pink on Central College Road above the church is listed from, I'm gonna say, the proposed site to, I believe, the rumo site on the other side, just on the east side of that T and D, also on Central College Road. I drew a map and that's eight hundred and forty yards.
Okay.
Approximately, you see in pink there.
Sure. Um, as I look at this map and ask you to as well, my sense is that they've gone to a rather large geography to justify the notion that this is compatible with the joining districts or the contents of the district. Most of what surrounds this site is either rural or low-density, three dwelling units per acre typically. Uh, there are clearly some exceptions, but you have to really travel to the major corridor to the east and south in order to encounter A R twelve, uh, or other A R districts. In any event, uh, we did feel that it was not compatible with surrounding developments, uh, both the, uh, single-family residential and there is multifamily commensalities left, um, which average again, three dwelling units per acre. We also felt that the height of this project, proposed at three stories, is highly uncharacteristic of this area. Uh, the other properties that surround it are almost entirely single-story dwellings, including the multifamily to the west. Uh, and we also did hear concerns about the electric traffic volumes and congestion at nearby intersections. I understand transportation's indicated some of that will be addressed. And lastly, a significantly smaller setback than proposed at other developments along the south side of Central College. Uh, previous developments there have a three hundred foot setback. The applicants were causing fifty feet. Uh, to summarize, our committee felt after, uh, talks with the applicant, their attorney, and the community that this application just simply was not compatible with the location where it is being proposed. We're well aware, as the applicant's attorney explained, that the need for, uh, better housing options in the community. In fact, Northland was wanting volunteers to expand the zoning program onto another city corridor, say, one sixty-one corridor, three and a half miles of it, uh, in order to help address that. It isn't a question of whether we need more housing options. It's a question of whether this is the right option at this particular location. We maintain that it's not. Again, you're at VolTwang to talk with you, so I will defer to them to make the additional case of any questions you might have.
I do have one question. Could you go up to the map and show me where you have three hundred foot setback?
My understanding. My understanding is that this is a three hundred foot setback.
Yes.
I haven't looked at it.
Yeah, it is.
My neighbor just was telling me that. Obviously, the church is a little different animal, but it has a significant setback in structure. Can't quite tell from this. Uh, but it is setback significantly from the road. This is going to be a park. It's, it's yet to be determined exactly what amenities that will be in the park, but I suspect they will not be within fifty feet of their own way. So the setback here is a lot less than what will surround it on the south side and on the north side of the east of Central College Road. It's gonna be sick enough.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, first speaker, please.
Greetings. My name is Dave Slovey. I own a home at Ashington Grove, and thank you for letting me speak. Um, if you look to the, to your right, you'll see on the, on the right side, the proposed apartment location. It's right in the middle of a lot of single-family homes. When you look to the left, you were talking about asking about the three hundred foot setback. You'll see that Ashington Grove is three hundred foot. The setback for the park's pavilion respected our area and put the pavilion three hundred feet back. And the quest church is three hundred feet back. Even further to the east is a development Albany, Albany Crossing, I believe, that is three hundred foot setback. When, uh, Preferred Living came in, uh, they did not respect our community desires at all to have a three hundred foot setback. You see it put very close to the street. This high-density proposal encroaches into the middle of an established neighborhood community of single-family homes. This spot zoning proposal will change the residential character cherished by the hundreds of people who live in this neighborhood, believing that their home will never be adjacent to such a complex. This proposal borders on a grievance trust of an agreement the city has to limit this area to three units per acre for the past twenty years. Nine communities met with the builder, preferred living, to hear their proposal. No one backed them. One hundred ninety residents signed a petition, including the board members of eight communities representing over one thousand eight hundred people. All of these residents opposed the development. These apartments would set a negative precedent, causing concern among all Columbus homeowners that any nearby parcel in any neighborhood of homes could be redeveloped with apartments. This is exactly the kind of panic that the city does not want as it moves into the next phase of zoning. The solution to the city's housing crisis and equity concerns is more homeownership, not more rentals. People don't want to be housed. They want to own homes. Homeowners would rather use funds to build generational wealth rather than making investors rich. Each single-family home is an investment for Columbus family. Each additional apartment building concentrates well to the hands of a few inexpensive renters. Isn't it interesting that granting this variance would create a self-serving cycle for apartment builders, keeping rents high while taking up land currently planned for single-family housing and pushing more people into rentals? For the record, is the city of Columbus pursuing spot zoning approvals of high-density complexes for the entire city? If so, this information needs to be disseminated to the public as soon as possible for obvious reasons. Make no mistake, this is a business entity that generates right-of-linkup for its investors who reap their profit and sell their stake to other investors who repeat the process. This is not welcome in our community. We are for reasonable development that complements our neighborhood. We are looking for a win-win-win scenario. A win for the landowners to make a profit. A win for the community to have a neighboring develop, develop with lifestyle houses. A win for the city in completion of a contiguous neighborhood linked with paths and trails that have been in the making for twenty years. A what-if scenario? If the city set aside areas zoned for high-density or commercial buildings and a builder wanted to build single-family homes in the middle of that area, would this commission approve such a proposal? Disrupting the community with spot zoning is never a good idea. I would hope you would say no and require that builder to find another location. We are asking this commission to vote no to Preferred Living by denying their application. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Dave, if you have any questions.
Good afternoon. I'm Matthew Ward, I'm board president for the Ashington Grove Association. I've been on both sides of rezoning, both as a resident and vice chairman of order zoning appeals. When rezoning pieces property, we always look at the Duncan factors, placing more value on some to have an objective view of what's going on. One of the considerations is whether there is only useful value of the land as the rezoning is requested. This case, that is no. The land has already had useful value as a single-family residence for decades, which is like many of the neighboring residential properties across the street on large lots. It would also have value as a single-family home or one-story condominiums. And to my knowledge, there has been no attempt to sell the property for these purposes. Another developer has expressed interest in the property if it were to come to the open market. In the past, the city parks department has also been interested in the land as it adjoins a new existing city park. Another thing to consider in rezoning is the request is how the surrounding area is so affected. The development of this density is out of place with the surrounding communities. There have been a strong push by the residents of this area, working with the city and the NCC to limit development to three units per acre or less for many years, up and down, Ori Road and long portions of Central College, as is reflected in the city's master development plan for Northland in volume two. And while it's old, it's still the current path to planning this area. For approving this request, you are putting a large transient population into an area of existing single-family homes, one-story condominium homes. This looks to be a prime example of spot zoning, which is generally frowned upon and indicates a failure of following established land use plans. There is already a similarly large number of multi-story complexes being built further down Central College, Warner Road, Hamilton Road and the New Albany area. With some dropping prices recently, possibly indicating they are unable to rent all the units they have in this particular part of the city. Please keep like, please keep property uses together, not in the middle of a much lower-density residential neighborhood. We ask that you review the proposal and see that it is not in the best interest of the existing neighborhoods, that there is more than enough useful value of the land for single-family homes or condominiums if the opportunity presented itself. An increase in crime that typically occurs and spills out from open uncovered parking is unacceptable in rejecting, in reject the zoning request as has been submitted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to address the City of Columbus Development Commission. My name is Rick Cashman. I've been a member of the Northland Community Council for sixteen years. The NCC represents thirty square miles of land. We represent a hundred and fifty thousand residents who own forty-four thousand eight hundred and sixteen single-family homes. The Northland Council Development Committee has a long history of passing projects. I am a member of this committee. We are, we have always been pro-development. We want successful real estate projects in our area. Every time this company has come before us on any other location, we have passed their projects. As part of the NCC Development Committee, we do all of the time-consuming groundwork on all projects. We personally visit all the sites. We carefully consider all the issues in the area and continuously communicate with all of the neighborhoods. We work out all of the problems before we ever approve the project. We do all of this for no pay. Why is this? Because like you, we want the very best for the Northland Community Council area as well as the City of Columbus. In October of two thousand sixteen, the Planning Division for the City of Columbus requested that the Northland Community Council, along with the Ori Road group, submit a plan on what would be acceptable between Warner Road and Central College. We had one primary request. Three units to the acre of the single-family homes. To date, the City of Columbus has abided by this development plan. We are not against apartments. Preferred Living has a very, very fine product. They just chose an inappropriate location to put this new apartment complex in. We are not for spot zoning. If Preferred Living would choose another location in the Northland Community Council area, I'm positive that we would approve the project. We are proactive. We have three developers who are interested in developing three units per acre on this site. And the City of Columbus's new two thousand twenty-four zoning code states that the purpose of Title thirty-four is to achieve the following objectives. One, to guide and control the use of land and attract substantial communities. And two, and this is the important one, preserve the quality of life in adjacent residential neighborhoods. This is all we want. In conclusion, the NCC voted sixteen to zero against this zoning application. Tonight, I am asking the Development Commission to vote with the NCC in denying this zoning application. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions they want to ask?
If we ask questions, we'll ask for the.
All right.
Thank you for your very thorough presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, David. Jared.
Thank you for the opportunity to, to address, uh, some of the items that were raised by the opposition speakers. And I'm gonna go in the order that they were provided to the commission. Uh, Mr. Paul stated that most of what's around the property is low density. I think that the exhibit we had on the screen earlier demonstrates that is not the case. There is, uh, C four residential hotels to the east, there's AR one, there's AR twelve to the southeast and east, and this is, um, most definitely, don't take my word for it, take the zoning map's word for it, this is most definitely a mix of uses that is immediately proximate to the subject property. There was discussion about the height. This property is in the thirty-five foot height district. It's in the same height district as all the adjacent property. We're not asking for any height variance. We are abiding the existing thirty-five foot height district, which is the same district as all the surrounding properties. You heard from Mr. Plankton on traffic. The city has an extensive funded improvement plan for Central College Road immediately to the north of this development and you heard the traffic management division say that there is no traffic concern associated with this proposal. With reference to the setback at the north. Yeah, with reference to the setback at the north. Uh, setback is a product of code requirement and regulation. And we do not ask for variance in the building setback. Buildings up on the north side of the property comply with the zoning requirement. Uh, compatibility. Uh, we believe we are compatible. We believe the zoning map exhibited the provided. There is compatibility and we think that parks exist for people to use and whatever use can have adjacent to a park than two hundred and sixteen apartments that gives those future residents the opportunity to go over and use that park. In terms of housing, my goal, uh, throughout my presentation was to address, uh, the city's policy. The city's policy as it applies to this site. Uh, Mr. Slovey, uh, made reference to, uh, the character of the area. Again, that's the zoning map that demonstrates what the character is. Um, he believes that the solution out here is homeownership and, and not rentals. I respectfully disagree. Uh, the solution to the housing issue in the city, certainly homeownership does lead to wealth and generational wealth, but, uh, when, when folks are moving here from Huntington, West Virginia, or Chillicothe, or Mansfield, they gotta, they gotta go someplace when they, when they first come here for a job, when they first come here to, to, to get an education at one of the places that I talked about earlier. Um, Mr. Slovey mentioned that, that this is about keeping rents high. Uh, the reason rents are high is because we have a, we have a supply issue in the community. As, as, uh, zoning chair Doran said in the quote I read earlier, uh, we have a simple supply and demand issue and this proposal, uh, before the commission obviously increases the housing supply in the community. Spot zoning came up a couple of times. This is not spot zoning. By any stretch, we can pull the zoning, uh, map back up and I can sit here and point to fifteen other AR zonings right in the immediate area. Um, I think what I heard Mr. Slovey say is that, uh, they don't want renters in the neighborhoods. They don't want renters in the neighborhood. And that's not okay. Mr. Ward made reference to the Duncan factors, uh, as it applies to the, to the, to this rezoning request. The Duncan factors is a standard from the Duncan versus Middlefield case from the Ohio Supreme Court. That is a standard for variances. That is what a Board of Zoning Appeals or a Board of Zoning Adjustment, or ultimately City Council would consider if someone was requesting a variance. That is not the standard that relates, uh, to, to a rezoning. The standards that relate to rezoning are, does the proposal, uh, further the existing policy objectives of the city? And I think that we have demonstrated here through the staff recommendation, all agency staff and through the elected officials' quotes, that this is in furtherance of the city's policy objective. Um, park adjacency, again, people should be encouraged to use parks and what a beautiful opportunity for these future residents to live uh, adjacent to the park. We, we set that edge back thirty-seven feet, uh, because recreation and parks asked us to. Those people are gonna have a, a small patio balcony that looks right over into that park and what a beautiful opportunity it is for those future residents. Um, Mr. Cashman mentioned that, uh, that, uh, they have approved all of the other locations brought forward through the Northland Community Council process, uh, that, that preferred living is brought forward. That's not true. Uh, I, I wasn't involved, but, uh, Dave Perry and, and Jared Smith were on some property over Sinclair Road and I needed another location and, uh, uh, Northland rejected that proposal outright. Um, I would love to take you up on the offer of approving all other locations. I might go back in my office tomorrow and, and study a, a couple more. So, so members, members of the commission, sending this rezoning request to City Council with a recommendation of approval is not a policy exception. It is not a policy exception. It is a policy fulfillment. And I respectfully request that you send this to Columbus City Council with a recommendation of approval.
Okay, questions, comments? Everybody? Why did you select this site? What, what were some of the, uh, impetus to select a site in this particular sector of the city?
Availability ground is always an issue in any time you're looking for this. Uh, if you pull that map back up, I can point to more than a handful of sites that I've done in this greater area. We've continued to have success with and developing in that area. Um, probably at this point on that map, well over a thousand units. Um, we've continued to have success in that corridor. Uh, if you look at a lot of those, I'm the one that made what I'll call the unprofessional map with my tip pen yesterday. Um, because I thought what was important is often AR zonings all get tagged orange, right? And I thought it was important not only to note the orange, but the different levels of orange that you have throughout that community with the TNDs on both sides of Central College kind of separating them. But I can tell you for a fact, a lot of those strikes for us and quite honestly, the C four that's at Central College there are developed as residential hotels, which pretty much meet the designation of an AR one division. So my answer in an unscientific way is that we've continued to have success renting out there and we've seen a continued demand in that area.
I, I might, I might add to that, Mr. Furman, and sorry to, to interrupt the question, but, um, Preferred Living was, uh, by no stretch of the imagination, the only, uh, local apartment residential developer that was in discussions and conversations with the estate that currently owns the property. It was, behind Preferred Living was just about anybody that would come to mind in terms of a local, uh, market rate apartment residential developer.
Okay. And you, and you're, you know, the preferred model is you do three-story buildings instead, or do you have different, different models that you?
The majority is three-story and we do do some four-story interior hallway. Or some, I'll call it five-story structured parking, but the majority, eighty-five percent of what we do is three-story walk-up state built. Correct.
Uh, Jared, let me ask you, what, what, what is the general rental structure or new construction that will be ready, completed in two thousand to one hundred and six?
In terms of leasing models?
Nope, exactly.
So you.
What range?
What range? Obviously, rents are gonna be anywhere from fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars. I say that as a safe, safe space in terms of, could be fourteen hundred for a very small one-bedroom. We have three bedrooms that are twenty-six hundred in this immediate area um, that we have done in the past. Uh, we rarely do units and rental agreements under nine months. It just depends on the cycle of the season. The majority of what I'll, I'll turn over if there, you know, people decide that they're moving along or going somewhere else occurs in spring and summer. So if we're trying to, when a unit comes online and it's nine months out instead of twelve, we would rather have that lease mature in May than in September. But the majority of time, nine to fourteen months is our lease terms.
All right. I've got, uh, I've been on this mission thirty years, plus or minus, and I've seen your product get better and better. I like it. I'm familiar with the ones on Warner Road and others. Uh, this, this is a, this is a difficult smack here. We are charged with the mission to say, is this appropriate? Or is this not appropriate? We don't wanna know what color the shutters are, what age the railings are. We, is it appropriate or is it not appropriate? And this isn't really an infill like you might find in, in some of the locations that have been bandied about in the city in terms of meeting this, this livability shortage. And, and the reason I asked about what the rents are is to, we've had people come through here, especially in the last several months, that are gonna put a seven-story parking garage in and, and multi-story building with, which only, and it's gone with concrete, steel, fireproofing and, and all kinds of code required extra costs. And yet, they're looking to get in one of these new deals with the new code, whi- which is in a corridor. This is not a corridor here, but there are corridors that are stipulated throughout the city. I would be, be hard pressed to think that you would have a reasonable rent for moderate housing if you have a concrete parking structure, concrete and steel, sprayed structural steel and all the fire requirements, a sprinkler system, a major sprinkler system with a fire phone. So is this really gonna be dialed in to where it, it fits with that, that new city mandate? Now, I'm an old dog here. I've been, I've been on, I bet I'm back closer to when this old code got written than we are today. And we've had meetings like this with thousands of people where we've weighed the pros and cons and we've come and worked out some sort of a step down and a buffering and, and some modifications. And I, I noticed your plan has the end walls of buildings overlooking the neighbors, so no balconies where you're looking down on the barbecue pit. That's good. That's good. You stepped in, you don't just have space, you have space in landscaping that provides very good buffering. And, and I see it in your plan, and I've seen it in some of your projects around town, but I don't see any step downs. And, and you see, you see examples, and I don't want to bore everybody with all the ones I'm aware of, where somebody will do a significant development, and then there'll be some condos nearby that's stepping down because there, there's a similarity, a quest for some similarity. And my most memorable zoning meeting was probably 25 years ago. Some man came in to oppose a CVS drugstore on Wintier Street in the South End. Because the presence of that CVS drugstore was going to intrude on the neighborhood where he grew up, on Student Avenue. And he had a kid, a child of his own, he wanted the same kind of lifestyles. And the, the drugstore was very needed in the community. Any kind of investment in it was really important. Nothing much was happening in the South End. And I went totally 180, listening to what he said. It would have been a problem. I couldn't feel good about saying, well, we don't care about the intrusion into your neighborhood. We have to care about that. It's part of the overall thing. How many promises have we made over 30 years to neighborhood groups that, that want some semblance of order and continuity and consistency? We've made those kinds of distinctions all along, and we've never just said, car wants, this is in a corridor, do whatever you want, go 200 feet in there. I'm, I'm real uneasy about how that's going to work with, with the new code, and I think it needs to be modified, turned up in some cases and turned down in other cases. I don't think the city, I made a comment once, it was in the newspaper, that Columbus is no longer a two-story city. And, and why? That tax, if, if we had a totally two-story city, every homeowner's tax bill would choke the person to, to driving him out of town, because some of it needs to fall on commercial uses or uses that have some density. And I think you're headed in the right direction, but as much as I like your product, and as much as I, I honor the thinking that went into the master plan that you've come up with, it's, it's too, too much of a stark contrast between what else is there without, without smoothing it down a little bit and making it fit in. The ultimate acid test, and it's, I apologize for the high, the high dynamic and extremely exclusive thinking of Einstein-type thinking, but if you're sitting on your, on your patio last week, and you're looking at a scene, what are you looking at after a certain development come in next door? Would look the same as a lot of pretty nice. That's always been a mainstay of my semblance of consistency. You can't weigh it, you, you can't magnetron it, but it's just logic and common sense. And I think you can get there, but it's, it's more than fits in a consistent manner. And as much energy as there is around the city to get density and get fill on, go right. I don't think this would be right the way it is. Needs to be tapered down and, and massaged a little bit to get what you want. And I invite the other commissioners to make the comment. Want to go?
You can go.
Echoing what Mike has said, this really disrupts the fabric. You know, it, it, it doesn't weave in. It's, boom, here's my product in your neighborhood. The opportunity here, which you spoke about, and you spoke about how nice it would be for people to move their apartments that open on the park, you know? You've got some apartments with balconies that, you know, look over here 37-foot flapper, but you don't have a plan that says, hey, I'm going to love the park, I'm going to do something with it. You know, there was an amenity there that's saleable for a different type of product. So I would, you know, certainly explore that and make the thing weave in. And, and really, you know, I've got so much respect for Northland, that they, they do a hell of a job, and have been for you. 16 zip, you don't pull a rabbit out of the hat. You gotta work to get those 16 boats, and, and I think you still need to do that work before I feel comfortable that you even met them halfway. So, you know, 16 zip is boat.
I don't know if you've noticed, but I'm a lot younger than most of these other guys. So, I have young kids, and I think that the American dream of owning a home is something that is very out of reach for the majority of people who are my age and younger. And hearing price points of apartments between 1,500 and 2,500 is also out of reach. I strongly feel that the corridors that have been set aside are primarily urban, and with little kids, I mean, we, after 15 years, we've just left a very urban neighborhood and moved to a more rural community, and we did that because our kids needed to have space to play. We were driving to big parks, we were driving to playgrounds, we were driving to the creek, I mean, we were driving everywhere. And so I'm a, I don't believe that all apartments should be on high-density corridors, because we, it's not fair to force this living into places that don't have the amenities that you all love about where you live. So I think this is a challenging conversation, because I, I think renters deserve access to amenities like the park and deserve access to a slower pace of living that you all love. And so I, I feel a lot more sympathetic, I think, to the conversation than my counterparts here, because it is about access, and it is about equity of access. And I don't believe that the average young family can buy a half a million dollar home. And so there has to be some middle space here where we are saying, I'm acknowledging the pressure of, you know, selling a house for half a million dollars and not being able to purchase it, and wanting to live in a beautiful building in a beautiful setting like you all live. So, I, I mean, I like the project. I can see how a young family would want to come live in the apartments. I also think it's not only about young families. We have a lot of older friends who are selling their homes and moving to condos, because they don't want to mow yard anymore. So while it's difficult, I think it's a really great project. I'm excited to see what the park will be. I know it's not developed, and I don't think there are any plans.
They have been developed on the, on the north side.
But not on this.
Right.
It's done.
It's done.
Well, that's great. Either way, I think it's a great amenity to have outside of the park complex. So, those are my comments.
And you get to vote first.
And I get to vote first.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Yes, Jared.
Let's go say yes first. Dan, you, are you going to say anything?
I'm probably in the camp of John. In terms of the form, it's, it's a little abrupt. It's, you know, we're going from the, you know, ZapCon or one-story apartment, you know, condos, condos, and you're going to this three-story product, just kind of shoe-worn. Yeah, I just, sorry.
You go back, I don't know, who's, Brandon, can you go back to that zoning map we were talking about a little bit? My pencil sketch, if you don't mind. I appreciate, obviously, when we focus down and we're looking directly at that site, right? And we look at the color photo I did, we're looking directly at kind of the condos just beside us, right? And then you have the park and the church. And obviously, I've heard a lot this entire time about three units to acre. I'm not going to say that's a new conversation. I fully acknowledge everyone said that from the beginning. I don't believe 20 years ago, everyone thought either that that, and I believe it is, is it 60 or 70 acres? Someone might be able to tell me how big the park is. Anyone? 60 or 70 acres that were going to be developed with anything at all either. Going along with that hypothetically, obviously, I won't say I took all their zoning, but you can also look at, in this immediate area, with a park and 216 units and my 10 acres, we're still at three units an acre, or three residents an acre. Is that the exact conversation that everyone wants to hear, because it's concentrated in one area? No, absolutely not. But my point is, is that for the last 20 years, everyone has discussed three units to the acre, and in the greater continuity of this greater community, what we're talking about, they're still averaging out to three units an acre.
Across the entire map? It's a map.
I know what we're getting. So I guess I would like to request to table. That being said, I would encourage, obviously, conversation around continuing to look at it as a land use. I appreciate that you like my buildings. I appreciate that you guys, obviously, have a long relationship and Northland works really hard, and I have respect for them. That's not about this, but I'd like to focus, when we come back, on appropriate land use in the greater area. I know we've shown that, and I know we've shown, obviously, what we've seen in the past in other areas where we've had AR1 densities next to single-family residential.
Jared, let me, let me ask a question. If we table this, is there any, is there any flexibility in, in working? In my opinion, the guy is just coming out of a bath. Best, best measure of any neighborhood in the city to talk.
And that's, I should elaborate on that conversation, is my point is in tabling to come back with something different. I'll be handed to say it is not going to be three units to an acre.
No, I don't think you need to go that far, but I think it is, it is a sledgehammer, and it needs to be a little softer touch than that.
Understood.
To, to, to stay, I would think, abrupt intrusion. It can be done, and you've gone, you're on the right track already for the way you designed it, but it's still just too much of a hit for that exact area.
Understood.
And, and I'm looking at 30 years of consistency and using the same litmus test on everybody, not just certain people, and, and not just certain kind of uses, but all just, I think you have it in you, but luckily this community, as Dave Paul is a, as a leader, and I think he is somebody you can count on being fair and reasonable, and see what you can do, see what you can get out of it, trying not to be any kind of an intrusion and still fit in and still accomplish your financial goals. No one's going to do this to make Disney World. Everybody that's going to do anything needs to make progress, but there's probably another way you can get there, and you're better than I, I thought, picture.
Understood.
All right, I would like, I would like to ask the question to vote on table one. Motion to take a vote? All those in favor? All right, please follow. Amanda Golden? Yes. John Uerson? Yes. David Turner? Yes. Jared Satterfield? Yes.
Thank you.
We have the, our votes, go ahead and your conversation.
Jared, thank you for your comments. I just want to give credit to my neighbors, not to me, for coming out to the room and talking.
Well, we appreciate your neighborship. All right, let's get started with case number seven, Z25-012, 2410, Demers Road.
All right. Please find in your supplemental packets, one, in updating staff report, updating practice comments, two, the expanded recommendation form from the Westland Area Commission, and three, 32 letters of opposition. The 14.07 acre site consists of two parcels, each developed with single-unit dwelling. Both parcels are pending annexation into the city of Columbus and will be assigned to the Bar World District. The applicant requests the LAR1 Limited Apartment Residential District to allow for multi-unit residential development. North and south of the site are single-unit dwellings in the SR semi-residential district under the jurisdiction Jackson Township. East of the site are single-unit dwellings in the LR2 Limited Residential District. West of the site is a religious facility in the SR semi-residential district under the jurisdiction of Jackson Township as well. Concurrent council variance has been filed, requesting a variance to increase the maximum lab garage pipe from 15 feet to 16. The site is within the planning boundaries of the Westland Plan, which recommends low-density residential, one to two units per acre land uses at this location. Site is also subject to early adoption of the Columbus Citywide Planning Policies, C2P2 Design Guidelines. The site is located within the boundaries of the Westland Area Commission, who recommends this threshold. The limitation text includes use restrictions, a maximum of 264 dwelling units, and includes a commitment to develop site in accordance with the submitted site plan and building elevations. Division of Traffic Management staff has indicated that the final limitation text will be taken into account as determined by the Traffic and Community Engineers Office, and the Columbus Multimodal Fair Play Plan identifies Demers Road as a suburban community connector requiring a right-of-way within 18 feet. City farm recommendation is that of conditional approval. The requested LAR1 Limited Apartment Residential District will allow the site to be developed within apartment complex over up to 264 dwelling units. While the proposal is inconsistent with the Westland Plan's recommendation of low-density residential land uses at this location, SAP recognizes existing medium-density residential, 10 to 16 dwelling units per acre to the southwest, and the proposal's high level of consistency with C2P2 Design Guidelines, including buffering and screening of adjacent low-density residential, preservation of existing mature trees along the southern edge, and activation of open space with walking paths as mitigating factors for support, with the condition that any movements required by the Division of Traffic Management and the Traffic County Engineers Office will be included in the final limitation text.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, Dan, it's been a long time, but you're still in traffic. Okay, Dan, it's been a long time, but you're still in traffic.
Uh, so related to this case, the, uh, uh, update in the staff report was in relation to the, uh, previously requested commitment at the southeast corner of the site. Uh, we have, uh, rescinded that request in consideration that the off-site sidewalk connection that we provided at the southwest corner that will serve, uh, to be able to connect to the, uh, existing sidewalk in that convenient area. Uh, related to access to the site, this, this site is within the jurisdiction, the access to the site rather, is within the jurisdiction of the Frankton County Engineers Office. Uh, traffic access, uh, to go to, prepare and review and approve by the Frankton County Engineers Office. Um, there will be, uh, commitments to turn land improvements there, uh, and, uh, there are some additional commitments there related to, um, those requests by the county. Uh, there is one clarifying item that will need to be, uh, uh, determined prior to, uh, finalization of limitation text. There is some commitment language, uh, that will, that will need to be further discussions as far as clarity to that, uh, prior to any consideration, uh, to the council.
I see there's a rounded off number of $193,166.16 that's required.
Yes, and the primary concern related to the text is, is, um, as the text is stated currently, um, it, it's a little bit unclear, um, which agency or which project that would be assigned to that. So some further clarity will be needed without context.
Chris, or Hunter?
No additional comments complaining also on that.
Okay, is anyone here to speak regarding case number seven? Three people just right. Jeff?
Good evening, I'm Jeff Brown with Smith and Hill, representing Metro Development.
I'm Joe Thomas with Metro Development.
I'm Mark Mann with Advanced Civil Designs with Engineers on the Project.
So. If you look at the site plan, it would be very familiar to you in terms of our layout. Because what we do wherever we can is turn the ends of our units to our neighbors. And as you know, our buildings don't have windows on the end. So when you look at this development, you see that layout wherever possible. And then when you look along the east property line, uh, you will see that we have our buffering and then we have our garages, which are 16 feet with dormers on them now. And then we have the setback to get to our three-story building. Uh, part of this development, when we had our initial discussions, I think we had three different. Yeah. Well, what would you put ours on? It looks so familiar. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, go to, I think, four. One of the.
That's.
The power.
Our presentation that day. Yeah.
Okay. All right, we had. A series of meetings.
Johnson, Bickers, Hunt, and Parks, we ran out of USB plugs, so just let them know.
All right. Keep going. Keep going. Stop. Um, we had several meetings with the zoning committee for the area commission, and Joe had a lot of individual meetings with groups and individuals talking about the development, what we can do. One of the things that was raised in terms of this particular site was the presence of trees. So we had our landscape architect go out and, and look at the site and, and identify, uh, major trees and existing tree lines that we could incorporate into our overall development. So that's the drawing that we based on. And if you go back one, then you'll see on the site plan, you'll see the trees along the south side of the property that we are maintaining. You'll see the major trees along the east property line that we've incorporated in, into our site. And again, uh, there's another tree on the, the, what would be the west side of that backing up to one of our neighbors, uh, that we are incorporating, uh, in the development. So we tried to listen and, and they made a valid suggestion. And, and so this is our site plan that incorporates that. When you go through all the changes that we've made, you will notice there's a detention pond in the southeast corner. That's the low spot. You will see the tree preservation around that. You will see those white lines, which are all the trails and sidewalks that planners like to see that activates the site and connects everybody. If you go on the east side, as I said, we've got that landscaping there. We moved the fence back off of the property line, uh, interior to our site. You've got the garages there with dormers. And then on the north property line, you will see that we again moved the fence back and added a double row of eight-foot pine trees. So, you know, that's a significant landscape commitment, uh, in terms of that. Uh, we moved the grill by building seven and eight closer to the middle of the site. Uh, we have a road that butts into our property at the northwest corner there called Christie Lane. Uh, the neighbors didn't want a connection, uh, so we have a gate there, uh, to prohibit that except for emergency access. Um, and again, you see all those little white lines, internal sidewalks around the ponds, around our units, around our open space. And then in terms of Demerus Road, we also have sidewalks along our property. And then the city asked us to extend that sidewalk on Demerus down to, uh, what was the name of the? Black Pine Drive to the south, and we agreed to do that. Uh, we moved the entry to the south. The planner asked us to flip the pool and the clubhouse so that the clubhouse would be out front. We did simple things like change the, the color of the fence, um, or some comments. So what we think we have here is a very well-thought-out site plan, uh, with as many commitments as we can make in terms of our overall development and our relationship with our neighbors. Now, we got a single family in Columbus to the east. We've got single family in the township to the north. And when you look at the Westland Plan, which was done in 94, it says one to two acres. Well, you can look at this map and see that those densities have been exceeded. All the recent zonings in this particular board are all exceed that number. And you've heard the analysis by the, the planning division in terms of the things that we've done in applying the principles of C2P2, make them able to support this, even though the 94 Westland Plan says one to two. So you know Columbus has a policy of not wanting to grow out further. So if we are going to accommodate all these people that are moving into the city, for whatever reason, we have to make use of the ground that we have available. And, and that's two things. One, maximizing what you can do on property that's already in, or annexed property that fills out the hole in the donut. And so that's what we're doing here in terms of this overall development. If you think about zoning, I mean, that's, these are the principles that they're looking for us to do. Now, everybody's going to say, single family, single family. Well, the numbers just don't work out. It's not Joe's fault, it's not my fault, it's, it's reality. So if you could go down a couple more, let's show you what we've done. Next, keep going. Okay. There was, uh, an issue raised when we were out at Westland, because we've been out there several times and in front of this commission several times. Well, you have supported what we've asked for. This is an analysis of all the various places we've been in the last few years. So northeast Columbus, we've done over 1,600 units, greater southeast, 2,100, Westland Area, 1,900, Hayton Run, nearly 1,000, uh, Berlin Township up in, in Delaware, 1,200, and then Powell Liberty in Concord, 616. So we are developing in the central Ohio area. We are meeting the need that is here in terms of providing housing. And so those area zonings, I believe, all except one, had the support of the development commission. And obviously, they got approved, so they had the support, city council. He could go next. All right, now we look specifically at the Westland development, where we've been. If you start in the upper left-hand corner, that's Paul and Galloway. Um, that was a piece of property that Joe was able to figure out how to develop when nobody else could. I had probably at least three other clients that looked at that, couldn't figure out how to work. What Joe did in, in terms of this development is take the developmental ground and develop it within appropriate density, three-story units. Uh, neighborhoods around us, as you can see from the map, and the rest of the ground was donated to the, the city Columbus Rex apartment. You come down into the middle where you see that big blue area, that's George'sville Road. Again, a development that Westland approved. Um, staff did not approve it, but ultimately, you approved it and city council did, same type of density, three-story units. You come down to the freeway there at the lower right-hand corner, that one triangle, uh, approval from Westland, and you all, three-story product. You can see the single family around this. You can see on the other side of the street, uh, backing up to the single family subdivision, same type of product. Um, when we got to Holt Road there that backed up, even though we tried our best in terms of that, uh, you all did not support it. Westland didn't, city council did. Um, so the lower right-hand corner is this site. So we are not introducing a new element. Um, there are already existing three-story, um, developments i- in that area before we even started. Uh, where Westland meets at the Auto Boutique. Uh, right next to that development there is a three-story project. So this looks at the area and what Westland in the past has supported. In terms of this particular application, we got the support of the zoning committee, uh, but we didn't get a majority in the full commission. And I understand sometimes it's a number of people that show up. But if you look at our relationship with our various sites, with our neighbors and everything, uh, this particular property on Demerus is not an outlaw in terms of our relationship with our neighbors. Um, traffic-wise, uh, Mr. Mann will answer the specific question, because everybody in, when we met with Westland has talked about the roundabout that is at Alfire at Demerus. Uh, the $197,000 again was an effort by Metro, um, to answer a question that was being asked, uh, but no one seemed to have an answer for. Uh, when we did the Holt Road development, the city asked us to look at a roundabout at that intersection. Uh, they asked us to make a contribution. We did. Uh, we used the same per cost per unit, uh, and we created a contribution here. I think we should just throw the money up and see whether county grabs it or the city grabs it, but we'll be happy to work with them um, on the languages and who gets that money. But there's nearly $200,000 to start something out here. Uh, clearly, there's been a lot of development, a lot of single family. Holt Road especially has three schools on it. No one did any improvements. That's not our fault, that's not the existing neighbor's fault, it's the reality. So what we tried to do is, one, we're doing the improvements that are required by the TIS, which has been approved by Columbus and the Frankton County Engineer. And two, we've done the additional stuff in there, another 200,000 as a fund to get something else done out here. And our experience has been pretty rude, for example. If you give the government the money, then they end up doing the study, which then allows them to do the plans for the improvement. So that money does help create the opportunity to change the situation.
Okay.
Uh, good evening, Joe Thomas, Metro Development. Appreciate your time to see me. Um, as Jeff Brown mentioned, we've, we've got a large, or a great history out here in the, uh, Westland Area Commission. You know, uh, we were here previously in front of your board, which, uh, most recently was a development called Tessa Place on Georgeville Road. Uh, of course, uh, you know, working directly with the area commission and with your group as well, city Columbus staff is, uh, often successful in getting that approved and as well with city council. Um, and then more recently, um, we came to Demerus Park, uh, which we're talking about the city. And, uh, you know, as far as working with the area, uh, neighbors understand, you know, the difficulty of, you know, adjusting to the development in your backyard. You know, we're working with, uh, landowners, the Shreks is the landowner to the north, and the Ruggles is the landowner to the south. Both of those homeowners, including Ruggles, uh, lived there prior to the homes being built directly to the east. So there was, there was a subdivision directly to the east at, uh, the force, the Ruggles and the previous landlord, the Shreks, adjusted to single-family housing being built directly to their adjacent property. So the, uh, property that's, uh, just adjacent to ours is the same family homes. And the backyards, you know, are upon Mr. Ruggles' property, you know, in particular, when he was living in this house or is continuing to live in this house, um, he had to adjust the, the development happening around him as well. So we understand, you know, neighbors, uh, willing and wanting to work with other neighbors for development to work forward. Mr. Shrek is actually not even selling his entire property to us. So the backside of Mr. Shrek's property is a divided piece of property that he's actually staying in his home along Demerus Road. So the project, you want to go back to the, the actual plan itself would be helpful. So this plan, if you look at where Billy Levin and Ten are, uh, Mr. Shrek's house is directly to the west of that. So we are buying the back part of his property. So again, Mr. Shrek, uh, will continue to live in the house and he'll continue to, you know, live in the neighborhood and will have us as his neighbors. Um, and then, uh, like I mentioned before, you know, Mr. Ruggles, according, you know, from his life and history of this area, did not have that development directly to the east behind him when he moved in. So there is change that happens. Um, we try to be cognizant of our neighbors, understand that, uh, change is difficult to accept, but, uh, and change is difficult with everything you do. But, you know, from our, uh, you know, working with the area, as Jeff mentioned, we understand traffic is a concern of everybody's. You know, traffic is probably one of the major items that we deal as developers, uh, probably number one objection when it comes to, uh, developments. You know, we do our traffic studies, we're with traffic engineers, and accordingly, we've worked with the Frankton County Engineers Office. We work with Columbus Engineers Office. Well, with this development, we work with both offices. Frankton County's approved our traffic study, um, along, of course, Demerus Road where our entryway is. Uh, city Columbus, with their traffic, didn't have comments regarding connections to, um, not only cars, but pedestrians. So we worked with city Columbus to address those items, which is that additional sidewalk, which is off our property on Black Pine, uh, along Demerus Road down to Black Pine. The neighbors directly to the east of us, um, were adamantly opposed to us making a sidewalk connection into their neighborhood. Uh, city Columbus, uh, wanted us to make that connection. Uh, we made some concessions to city Columbus, and I think everybody would agree that, um, if and when that neighborhood to the east of us would like to have a connection, it's still available to them. Again, the property to the north is all township. Christie Lane is a township road with township connection to our property line. Uh, understand that the neighbors to the north do not have sidewalks, so there is really no pedestrian access to the north. But however, uh, the neighbors wanted us to make it simple and clear that they did not want our residents, you know, walking on the streets, which creates a safety hazard for them driving around their neighborhood with, with no sidewalks. So we put up what would be a solid gate, and the gate's been approved by the Jackson, uh, Township Fire Department. Uh, the tax, Jackson Township Fire Department wanted ballards, but understood that a gate probably makes better for neighbors opposing, uh, pedestrian access there. So we got that approved. We don't predict, you know, particularly always put fences around our communities, but understand, uh, you know, having neighbors adjacent to us and their concerns of delineation property line. So we agreed to put up not only a fence, but, uh, we put up, we're going to put up a composite fence. Uh, it's not going to be a vinyl, and it's not going to be a wood fence or a cedar fence. We're going to do a fully composite fence because the neighbors were concerned about the actual maintenance of the fence. You know, of course, you put a cedar fence up, boards get, you know, warped and, and fall off and/or they need consistent maintenance. You put a vinyl fence up, you do see some mold or mildew that collects on the vinyl fence. So we went through the whole effort of putting up the actual vinyl fence and, and made it composite instead. And what I want to draw your attention to more clearly is, on the east property line, which is adjacent to the neighborhood, is directed to our east, is a very substantial growth of trees and or underbrush. And that underbrush actually is, we're going to fully preserve that. So wherever you see that fence line that we show on that east property line, we have placed the fence outside of that tree line and or underbrush to delineate, we are going to leave that area completely undisturbed. We are going to leave that area completely undisturbed. So if you're out there today, you would not even be able to see from our backyard to their backyard in this moment today because of that underbrush. And then, of course, leaving the larger deciduous trees and then actually supplement additional trees in that area too, where there is possibly some gaps where we see there are some ash trees that were going to be or have to be removed because they're diseased and dying and falling over. So we've supplemented that. And then on the north side as well, there's larger deciduous trees there that have great large canopies. We're going to preserve those and then supplement again on those different spruce trees at eight foot tall. So we're trying to, you know, be consistently with our, you know, attribute of our neighbors, pulling everything off the property line directly to the east, which is the closer homes, pulling stuff back from Demerus Park or Demerus Drive. And then, of course, pulling stuff internally to our site and then creating that sidewalk network. So another item of importance for everybody's discussion tonight is the roundabout at Demerus now Fire Road. So Mark Mann is a traffic engineer with Advanced Civil Design. And I believe he has a actual, another PowerPoint to share with you all tonight as well.
Soon on the drive there, the one that says, the second one down Alkar and Demerus Traffic Body. I'm actually going to, I feel scared of standing up to this if I may, I'm going to walk over to the board and point at things and wave my hands a little bit.
I always like all the old school.
Yes. Some of those are old school. So as we, as we look at this, as we look at this presentation, obviously, you may or may not be able to see some of those on the office, but you can't see it, but there's. See what's up here. What we've done here is just a quick overview. So when we do a traffic study, we typically look at two or three different major components. Intersections is one of the things I've looked at and a roundabout, even though it's not a real intersection, but a silver dollar is, is one of the, one of the ways we have moving traffic in and around the area. With the least amount of interference between vehicles to vehicle conflicts. So they work really well. But in order to, in order to determine whether this roundabout is, is operation or operating within the typical City Columbus criteria, we have to do an analysis. To do that, we have to count the traffic that's going into the roundabout and then what direction is that traffic going? So that's what these numbers, as you, as you're looking at the approaches with the hours represents, represents all the volume of traffic in this particular case on Demerus traveling northbound. And then whether it's making a U-turn, which you can obviously do from a roundabout, whether it's making a left turn, going straight through or making a right turn. The reason we do that is because what we're looking at is we're looking at what's the total amount of, of traffic that's at any one point within the intersection, within the peak hour. And, and to do that, we need to know that traffic that's approaching from the south, if it's, if we're trying to count how much traffic is actually going through this location, then we have to know that all this traffic is actually going to go through here. But if we look, if we're talking about this approach, then it's really only going to be the left turn traffic that actually goes through this point. So we add all those, we add all those numbers up and it comes through any particular volume. And we compare that to what FHWA says is a reasonable number to go through any one point at the intersection or any one point of the roundabout during the peak hour. The reason I bring that up is, was we were providing some information that was collected by the neighborhood relative to traffic counts at this, at this particular roundabout. And if you could page down to the fifth one, I think it is. Yeah, so that, that one, this one right here. These numbers represent what the neighborhood collected. I believe they must have been sitting in one of these vacuums when they were, when they were collecting the data. But they collected exiting volumes, which although look like they're probably reasonable numbers based upon ours, are not really much use to us in an analysis. So what we did, if you could go back to the end one of the other four exhibits, we tried to relate what our numbers were when we collected the approach volume to what their numbers were on the exiting volume. Because there was some concern that there was discrepancy between the volumes, that's a large discrepancy that actually doesn't really exist. Because if you compare our numbers to what is in their numbers, they're within a few percentage of each other. Variations that might happen on a, on a daily traffic count basis. Some of their counts were on a, on a Tuesday, other counts were on a Friday. Usually we wouldn't want to count on a Friday because it can skew the volume numbers. We would usually count on a Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday. That would usually be the average day of the week and that's when our numbers were counted. So that's probably some of the discrepancies that we're looking at. But one of the things that was brought up by the neighborhood is that in looking at the volumes, they inferred that there was considerably more traffic in the roundabout than FHWA numbers says it could accommodate. And that's actually not accurate. I think, I think what was going on is it was a misinterpretation of what that, what that FHWA sent and said. If you could go to the last. Yeah. Back onto the yellow highlighted piece. So there's a statement here that talks about eighteen hundred vehicles per hour at any point. So it's not the total number of vehicles in the roundabout, but it's any point that it crosses. So if you can just go back to one more. So again, going back to, so if you look at, if you, if you were to draw a line through here or a line through here or any one of those four quadrants and added up each of the approach volumes, it would be what's the number of vehicles crossing that line in the peak hour? Not the total number in the, in the, in the, in the roundabout. And based upon using that analysis, we're around eleven hundred, twelve hundred vehicles in the peak hour. So we're well below that eighteen hundred number. So that means that the roundabout not only operates well today, but even in the design here in 2035, it still operates at an acceptable level of service as far as the City Columbus, Frank County and even FHWA is. So that's kind of a quick overview of traffic and how roundabouts operate.
And we got it. Okay, let's call, let's call up first. Does anybody want to speak tonight regarding this? How many hands did I see? Oh, you're.
We're very timely.
Three, three minutes each. Yeah. You're good?
Yeah, we all rehearsed.
Before I start using my three minutes, I would like to thank everybody in these organizations and these commissions and the Western Area Commission, my wife and daughter here today. And I would say that my daughter at eleven knows more about local governance at the civics than any eleven-year-old you're ever going to meet. And she's been at every coalition meeting and every conference commission meeting and she's here rocking it. So if you want to see her notes afterwards, they will be available.
Well, she may need a day job because we don't make much money.
Okay. So good afternoon, although. We're moving into the evening now. My name is Brad Leir and my home is adjacent to the Jackson Township property we are discussing today. I am grateful for the opportunity to address this commission and I hope input from our community leads to the most beneficial development possible. Over the past few months, our coalition of neighbors has thoroughly researched this project, project. We have collaborated with Metro Development, Jackson Township, the City of Columbus, state and federal agencies, local realtors and the Westland Area Commission. Our primary concerns are traffic, aggressive zoning changes and limitations of the Metro Development Company itself. This project exemplifies rushing to develop without all the facts. For instance, traffic recommendations for this project are based on car counts from 2023. Now I know, we just had a presentation that was dropped off three minutes before this started and it said that at noon today, like it's supposed to. But we still have our opinions of the data that we collected. And we also look at the fact that in 2023, when the projection numbers came, there weren't almost a dozen other apartments and housing developments in the area, which the Metro Development guys showed us very clearly are a lot of their products, but also the groups before us and housing developments and schools. It's a lot. Grove City and Jackson Township are transforming rapidly. And understandably, the City of Columbus and the county are struggling to keep up. While we analyze Metro Traffic Study and the updated study, which of course they did when they had the roads closed for detours entering a holiday weekend, we, you know, we observe that a significantly different reality and conjective as people who live in the area. This data does not reflect the current reality, especially given a recent surge in development, changes in work patterns since COVID, a time when travel was at historic lows. To be honest, we consider this to be low-quality data. Now, moving on to zoning, there are three land usage plans governing this area. The nineteen ninety-four Westland Area Plan limits development of this land to no more than five homes per acre. It's designated low to medium density semi-residential according to the 2010 Jackson Township Plan. And if, and I mean if, this is annexed into Columbus, the land will be zoned all rural, meaning one home per five acres. These plans together dictate a maximum of seventy homes on these four acres, which, as everybody has said prior to my presentation, aligns with surrounding residential developments. We do not disagree with that. However, this proposal calls for eleven three-story apartment buildings with two hundred and sixty-four units. That is more than three times the recommendation of any applicable land usage plan. And please note, the Westland Area Commission has not adopted the C2P2 land usage guidelines. Design, yeah, sure, not land usage. And they voted to not endorse this project due to traffic and zoning. This inappropriate zoning leap is incongruent with the surrounding area and will cause unnecessary population strain. Metro Development has told us they only build one product. That product is experiencing decreasing market, market relevance. According to the Columbus Association of Realtors, there are now more existing home sellers than buyers in central Ohio. The April and May twenty twenty-five market updates from the Realtor Association confirm a trend of higher homes for sale inventory and softening existing home prices. The urgency to build new rental units is waning and this dramatic ill-conceived zoning request appears to be unnecessary. In conclusion, we feel central Ohio development planners should support projects offering residents equity stake in the community. While rental housing has value, the market for new rental projects appears saturated. We urge this commission to deny this application, slow the development of Demerus Road and advocate for a more stable central Ohio future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Oh, it was good afternoon, but now it's good evening. My name is Rich Paretta. My wife Cheryl and I live immediately north of the proposed Demerus Park apartment development. Thank you for this opportunity to speak before you. Our greatest concern for this development going forward is the terrible traffic it will cause on this section of Demerus Road. Graphic one, graphic page one. Our concern grows with the Metro Development Project's Alkira Meadows located on Alkira Road, now ready with one hundred and thirty units, five hundred feet from the roundabout and will add two hundred and fifty cars to traffic. Hudson Crossing located on Demerus Road, under construction with one hundred and sixty-six units. And I just saw one hundred and ninety on there, so it's grown since the last time we looked at this. There's seven hundred feet from the roundabout and will add over three hundred cars to traffic. And the proposed Demerus Park with two hundred and sixty-four units, half mile from the roundabout, will add over five hundred cars to traffic. There is nothing we can do regarding Alkira Meadows and Hudson Crossing. The over five hundred cars these two projects will add to traffic is already in motion. Our hope is to stop the additional five hundred cars that Demerus Park will add to an area that does not have the infrastructure that can be modified to accommodate this kind of growth. Demerus Road is a two-lane road from Southwest Boulevard to the Alkira Road Roundabout. This stretch of road is designated by planners as a car-dependent area. There are no continuous sidewalks and no bike lanes that can take you out of the areas. Turning to graphics page two. As Demerus Road approaches the Alkira Roundabout, it passes under the two seventy overpass bridge. Due to the bridge design, the road is restricted to two lanes. Alkira Road also passes under two seventy and due to the bridge design is restricted to two lanes. The Alkira-Demerus Roundabout is single-lane with no opportunity to expand due to its proximity to the two seventy overpass and the historic Salem Heights Cemetery to its immediate north. Back to graphics page one. For all residents living on this section of Demerus Road looking for the closest gas station, the certified gas station located at the Alkira-Holt intersection, shortest route is through the roundabout. For the closest grocery store, the Kroger at George'sville Square, shortest route through the roundabout. And the closest access to two seventy, the George'sville Road entrance exit, shortest route through the roundabout. During the school year, Demerus Road is heavily traveled by southwestern city school buses. Demerus Road is one of the main routes north from the transportation center located on Southwest Boulevard to student neighborhoods. There are multiple drop-offs and pickup locations on Demerus, south of the Alkira Roundabout. On graphics page three shows our four roundabout traffic counts that we did. While school is in session, we found hours when one thousand nine hundred and eighteen vehicles and one thousand eight hundred and ten vehicles passed through the roundabout. While school was not in session, we found hours in which we counted one thousand seven hundred and two vehicles and one thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight vehicles passed through the roundabout. According to the Federal Highway Administration, the maximum circulating flow within a single-lane roundabout is eighteen hundred vehicles per hour. Obviously, the roundabout is already at capacity. Nobody wants the terrible traffic that will come with the Demerus Park apartment project, nobody. If you guys get this wrong, it stays wrong and there's no fixing it. Please vote no to this project. Thank you very much for your time.
Before I begin this evening, I would also like to add, we were unaware that we were allowed to submit petitions. We do have a petition with six hundred and eighty-nine signatures opposing this development. Good evening. And thank you to the commission for hearing us on this matter tonight. I'm Gavin, President of twenty-four hundred Demerus Road. I'm here representing serious concerns from our community regarding Metro Development LLC's aggressive expansion in Jackson Township. Excuse me, I'm a little nervy. Within just a one-mile radius, Metro is rapidly developing multiple properties, projects that are already straining local infrastructure, especially along Demerus Road and at the Alkira-Demerus Roundabout. The current zoning allows for one to two dwelling units per acre. Metro's proposed Demerus Park development calls for a staggering nineteen, nearly ten times the existing zoning limit. This dramatic inappropriate increase will bring density that would not only overwhelm our already burdened roads, but also threatens to erase the very character of our neighborhood, which is made up of small, single-family homes. Before Metro, there were no three-story buildings in this area. In fact, most of the homes along Demerus Road are single-story homes. Now, this proposal would bring Metro's new three-story building count to thirty-nine in our area. Within a small one-mile radius, mind you. Towering over existing single-family homes and eliminating in any sense of visual or architectural continuity. These masses of new three-story buildings are now an extremely dominant characteristic on the area landscape, redefining the entire field and function of our community. This is not a well-planned transition, nor does this reflect the needs or desires of existing residents. We've asked Metro time and time again for more appropriate two-story buildings to ease this transition. But Metro has refused citing that it does not fit their business model. This model appears focused for maximum profit with minimal regard for impact on our residents, while the landscape we know as home continues to be overdeveloped and forever changed. Scale and context matter, particularly with this new proposal. Eleven three-story buildings packed into a fourteen-acre site with such unprecedented density proposal is simply incompatible with our neighborhood, nor is it sustainable. nor is it sustainable. Traffic is already a major issue. Our community's independent vehicle count shows that the Demerus-Alkira Roundabout is already consistently operating at or near capacity with no hope for improvements due to restricting landscapes and structures, even before accounting for the additional traffic from Metro Development's many new properties within the local area. Metro's own traffic data collection was poorly timed, taken during road closures on a federal holiday while schools were out of session, all circumstances that clearly skewed that data. In short, this proposal, especially in combination with all of the other new metro properties in this area, fails to respect important infrastructure limitations, density impacts, or the character and functionality of our community and roadways. We ask that the Development Commission consider these concerns carefully. We ask that the needs of the existing community be prioritized over profit and excessive proposals. We ask that this proposal in its current form, especially its excessive density leap and the inclusion of three-story buildings, be reconsidered or denied. Responsible growth is possible and development can be balanced with the needs of the people already living here. Our community deserves responsible, thoughtful development that respects the existing residents, their homes, the area infrastructure and traffic and quality of life. Thank you.
Gentlemen. If you could go back to the slide before, I think that had, uh, so you know, go down a couple that had all this, our other developments.
Presentations, that's our presentation.
Yeah, if you go back to what we gave it for. You can. There we go. Okay. If you look at this map, and I, you know, I'm like Mike, I'm old, I can do old school too. Okay. Here's two-seventy. Here's Alkira. Here's Demerus. We did this development, three stories, similar density, Westland approved it. We did this development, three stories, similar density, Westland approved it. You can see residential here, you can see the residential over here. This one over here, they approved it, no one cares because it was, the head company is their residential. The important thing that we are doing is we are meeting a need. We did not introduce the three-story element. That was already done up to right here, as I said, right where they meet as the auto boutique, that apartment development just south of, of that location is a three-story project. So I guess it kind of depends on how many people signed a petition as to the answer to the area commission. Because this is okay, this is okay, but there's an issue here.
Wow.
Now, when it comes to the traffic, I'm not the engineer, but there's an engineer here, there's an engineer here, there are engineers at the county. If there was a situation with that roundabout that one of those governmental agency was concerned about, they would ask us to look at it and investigate. Columbus did that at Holton-Alkira. And we also ended up contributing a heck of a lot of money to whatever improvement they're going to do there. Now, we try to be responsible and we did the same here, thing here. No one asked us for the extra money. No one asked us to go look at that roundabout. But we still put that money up there and that will trigger one of those agencies to go do a study or do something if they feel appropriate. Now, I'm not going to argue who can count better or not, but I've got to rely on what the traffic engineers look at, look at and what they tell me is going on in that situation. This is an appropriate land use. If you go back to our site plan, I mean, you know, this is not our first rodeo, either for Joe or myself or our land planner. We look, those three people look at this property and figure out how best to interact with the neighbors. And so when you come down to the south, we said on these street preservation in here, we have a pond with a walk-around and everything. These homes right here have a pond behind them. We purposely, in terms of our units, try to bring them in, try to put the ends of the units where we interact with the neighbors. Look over here, when we back up to these R T lots in the city of Columbus, which exceed the Westland zoning recommendation, because that's one to two. That's more than that, as are all the ones down here, more than the one to two. But again, we've got our landscaping, our setback, we've got our garages, we've got the parking here in the building. That's a long way away. Again, we tried to do the same thing over here in this particular corner with these over here. So we try to do what we can with our layout. The, the market is three stories. You saw every zoning here was a three-story request, except for the, uh, the one that Mr. Boggs did, that was a four-story building. So that's the market, that's the demand. And I think in terms of the time that we've spent, now we are unsuccessful. And we don't like being unsuccessful with the neighbors. We've done our best and as you can see from our previous zonings, we've got them to support this type of density and this product in other locations, very close to this site. So we've done our best, we think it's an appropriate land use, and I think everything that we've done extra, make it an even better product. And that's, I think that's the goal of the zoning process, is that what we start with and what we end up with, the end is better than what we started with. Okay, any questions or comments?
What is your buffer on the, um, I don't know which direction.
This is, this is twenty-five feet and what we looked at is Joe was saying, the other story and the trees are, are all staying. So what you're seeing across now is what you're being continued to see. There are some ash trees that we have to remove. Uh, and so we have some supplemental trees we're doing here. Here, and again, we moved the fence inside. Again, we moved the fence in here. We identified the large trees to incorporate. These are two rows of eight-foot pines. And then, you know, your fight says those are not inexpensive in terms of the development cost. Twenty-five, twenty-five here with existing trees and everything. And then again, pre-preservation along this, this is part of the street corridor protection zone that we're preserving, yet incorporating in terms of the development. And as you can see with all the walkways and everything to connect everything now.
As I, as I look at the site plan, I think it's highly developed with the end walls overlooking the neighboring properties for privacy. And I see meaningful buffers to the east of the pond and all along the south edge of the property. As well as, as the setback of the fences and intermingled with the garages. So, so you're really creating a working and visible buffer, both functionally for traffic, for movement of people and for eyesight. The only, uh, the only question here, I think this is an excellent site plan, well filed out and sensitive to how it's fitting in with the rest of the, of the mosaic of existing uses. The only question is, okay, you've got a traffic circle and some, some roads that go through that eye of the needle, so to speak. And maybe at some point, probably not immediately, but maybe at some point, it's going to put a stress on it. I don't know that any development's going to fix that. And I know that I saw the number of close to two hundred thousand dollars being allocated to assist with future developments for ingress, egress and traffic flow. So in, in my opinion, this development is so much better than the one that we saw in the previous case where a lot of those things just did not fit. Who cares? My comment. Anybody else?
Okay, I think we're, we're ready to call the vote and see where it goes. Uh, we need a motion to take the vote. Go move. Yeah, one second. Oh, second. Okay. All right, all those in favor, vote. All right. Okay, please call the room.
John Ingersson?
Yeah.
Dan Foden?
Yes.
Amanda Golden?
Yes.
Derek Fash?
Yes.
Thank you guys for your time.
Oh, okay. You can have us.
You're the deciding factor.
Good job.
Job.
Hi, Joe.
Hi, Joe. I'm Karen.
Such a nice neighborhood. They killed the horse.
So they can endure it back now.
Anything, anything else?
Yeah.
Even though strictly around the angles with the roundabout. You know, there's always right turning.
Yeah.